Time is six P M. We will begin our caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order immediately following our caucus. Mister Truesdale will lead us in roll call. The invocation will be led by Councilman Majors this evening. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez. For communications this evening, we have two points of communication. We're playing a little catch up. So we have Gammit Theater, uh, who is here to discuss their thirtieth anniversary season. Uh, Miss Melissa Nicholson, the executive director is present. We will also discuss the twenty-third annual Tour de Belt. Mike Shaw, president of the Capital Area Green Belt Association is present. We will then move to courtesy of the floor. Next, we have approval of minutes. Uh, council members, we have two sets of minutes, uh, to review. We will have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and approval of minutes for the special legislative session that occurred on April, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will then move to reports of committees. The first committee report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Green on the American Rescue Plan Town Hall Meetings that were held. The next report will be from Chair Daniels on the work session of May second, two thousand and twenty-three. And the final report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Rodriguez on the work session of May second, two thousand and twenty-three. We have one ordinance for first reading, that's Bill Six of two thousand and twenty-three, which will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution forty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-three will also move to the Administration Committee. Resolution forty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution forty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. And resolution forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Safety Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, any new business? I, I just have one, uh, note regarding, um, a scheduling matter for next week, and then we will adjourn. So if everybody's ready, I will call our legislative session to order at six oh four P M. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the role?
Miss Daniels?
Here.
Miss Green?
Present.
Mister Lawson?
Here.
Mister Majors?
Here.
Miss Rose?
Present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
Miss Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Um, we can all take a moment of silence, uh, for the, uh, families of, uh, as Reverend Lily McMullin, who passed away, as well as the, uh, family of, uh, Angelo Casio, who was, uh, there was an incident in the city this, uh, recently, and, uh, he is currently, um, in, in the hospital. So we just ask that you, uh, take those two families and all families that have been, have suffered loss recently, and please have a moment of silence for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we all rise?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. We will begin our communications this evening by welcoming Miss Melissa Nicholson, Executive Director of Gammit Theater. You're fine. Just one note, please turn the microphone on and speak directly into it. That way, everybody in the room will be able to hear you and those watching online will be able to hear you as well.
Okay. Great. Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, so we're very excited over at the Harrisburg Shakespeare Company, uh, because this is our thirtieth annual Free Shakespeare in the Park. Um, we've been producing out there the last thirty years. Every year, we spend about seven weeks, uh, in residence at Reservoir Park, building our sets, rehearsing at night in May, and then, um, producing for three weeks in June. Um, we had a little handout there, so you can see some of the shows that we've done over the years. And I just wanted to share some of our stats with you. Um, over seventy-five thousand people have seen Free Shakespeare in the Park since nineteen ninety-four. We've had two hundred and seventy-four performances. Over seven hundred and forty professional designers, actors, and artists have participated in the program, and over five hundred volunteers. Um, currently, we average anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand people each summer that come to see the play. Uh, we are incredibly grateful to the city of Harrisburg through all its many administrations and city councils over the years. Uh, and, uh, we encourage you and all the citizens to come, take advantage of this free performance. Uh, the show is made possible through the generous support of Dauphin County, the Foundation for Enhancing Communities, the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts, and of course, our thirty-year partnership with the city of Harrisburg. Um, so that's, that's all I came to say, and, uh, it opens on June second. It runs through the seventeenth. Uh, always check the weather before you come. And, uh, that's, uh, Wednesday through Saturday evenings at beautiful Reservoir Park.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. We do have a proclamation for you in recognition of the thirtieth anniversary season, so just bear with me for a moment. Uh, the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Office of City Council, and Office of City Clerk. Proclamation, whereas the City of Harrisburg applauds Gammit Theater for their dedicated commitment to sharing live theater and the arts with the greater Harrisburg area for thirty years. And whereas Gammit Theater is the combined company of Popcorn Hat Players, Children's Theater, and Harrisburg Shakespeare Company. And whereas Gammit Theater carries out their mission to tell classic stories in new and exciting ways. And whereas Gammit presents approximately two hundred and fifty performances to thirty thousand people, twenty thousand students per year participate in theater school classes, workshops, residences, and shows. And since nineteen ninety-three, Gammit has reached over six hundred and forty thousand children and adults through touring and educational programs. And whereas Harrisburg's first annual Free Shakespeare in the Park, a midsummer night's dream at the Band Shell in Reservoir Park, was held in nineteen ninety-four. Annually, each June, Gammit has presented a professional Shakespearean play free of charge to the community. And whereas Gammit's improvisation group, Troop, excuse me, TMI Improv, is a fixture in the Harrisburg improv scene. Gammit hosts the Young Acting Company and the Gammit Theater Summer Academy for student performers. And whereas Gammit purchased the former First Church of God and renovated the space to include the select medical main stage, the Capitol Blue Cross Lobby, the Gammit Theater Education Center, and the Alexander Grass Second Stage. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends Gammit Theater for their vision of a world where all people cherish classic stories and share them with future generations. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful thirtieth anniversary season. Signed and attested in the city of Harrisburg, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. If you wouldn't mind joining us for a photo. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Also, I'd just like to extend, if anyone wants to come make opening remarks, I think of the performance list.
Good evening, and, and thank you for being here, Miss, uh, I don't want to say your name wrong. Miss Nicholson, I have one question, I'm sorry. Um, I was just wondering if any of, if any youth wanted to get involved in the theater. I think I heard you may offer some classes. I just wanted to know where, um, the public could get in contact with you.
Absolutely. We teach tons of summer programs as well as, uh, classes throughout the year. And you can go to gammittheater.org, or if you just Google Gammit Theater or Popcorn Hat Players, that'll get you to the right place, too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all you do.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Mister Michael Shaw, President of the Capital Area Green Belt Association, to share about the upcoming twenty-third annual Tour de Belt.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for having me here this evening. I'm pleased to share with you information about the twenty-third annual Tour de Belt event, which will be taking place this first Sunday in June. This is our, the Capital Area Green Belt Association's annual community bike ride event that's designed to raise awareness and also financial support uh, for the Capital Area Green Belt Association's mission to protect, maintain, and improve the Green Belt Trail system throughout the greater Harrisburg area. Over, we expect over a thousand participants will be traveling the Green Belt's twenty-mile loop, which is a century-old trail system of picturesque natural areas, parks, and open spaces that connects the city of Harrisburg, Paxton, and Pembroke Burrows, and Susquehanna and Swetera Townships. The trail is maintained by the Capital Area Green Belt Association and connects communities for work and for healthy fun. And while the Green Belt is open to the public every day, on the first Sunday in June, ride marshals, crossing guards, SAG wagons, and ride guides will add to the experience through this event. So it's a perfect day, whether you're enjoying the trail for the first time or for the hundredth time, to come out and enjoy some of the fun. Plus, there's a celebration after passing across the finish line with food trucks, music, educational exhibits, and fun activities. Business sponsors are also given space for tents and tables where they are able to interact with participants and promote themselves as stewards of the environment, health, and wellness. Again, the time of the event is Sunday, June fourth, taking place from nine A M. to two P M. The ride will start and finish at the Harrisburg Area Community College, and riders will be guided along the Green Belt's twenty-mile loop. Again, the, the goal and the mission of the Capital Area Green Belt Association is to maintain and improve the Green Belt Trail as a green resource for healthy outdoor activities and transportation connections. And as of today, we have a little over eight hundred registered riders and, uh, over a hundred and twenty registered volunteers for the event. So we're expecting to, again, see a great turnout. For funds that erased the event, we use these funds for matching funds for public work, works projects that impact the trail and increase safety of trail crossings at busy intersections. Uh, we also use the funds to pave and repair sections of the trail annually, as well as remove trash and other large objects and cleanup projects. Uh, they're used, we also, uh, plant native species trees, shrubs, and flowers, and fight to control invasive species, plants and insects. Uh, just a few examples of projects completed in two thousand and twenty-two include, uh, guard rail repair on Paxton Street, uh, some initial phases of a Paxton Parkway restoration project that continues to be underway, and also in, uh, a bridge repair, uh, for what we call the Amtrak Bridge going over the rail lines in the South Harrisburg section. If all goes well, our goal is to raise, uh, thirty thousand in funds after expenses. And key supporters of this event include Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority, Faulkner Subaru, Covanta, Highmark, and State Health, and of course, other key partners such as the city of Harrisburg, County of Dauphin, Harrisburg Area Community College, Paxton and Pembroke Burrows, and Susquehanna and Swetera Townships. I've shared, uh, a flyer, uh, of the event, which provides some, some basic information. Uh, there's still plenty of time for people to sign up and register to be a part of the event, which includes a free T-shirt for every rider, uh, and participant. And you can find out more information, uh, by visiting our website at W W W dot C A G A dot org. And that's all of the information that we had to share on the event this evening, and happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you so much. Uh, council members, do you have any questions regarding the upcoming Tour de Belt? Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us and for sharing. And if you wouldn't mind sharing the website one more time, in the event that someone would be interested in registering.
Certainly. The website address is W W W, C as in cat, A as in apple, G as in good, A as in apple, dot org, caga dot org.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. This time, we will move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. Uh, you'll have two minutes to share your comments, and Mister Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. So I'll begin to my far right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'll move to the middle section. Okay, please come to the microphone. I'm not sure if it's on, if you wouldn't mind. There's a small button at the bottom.
My name isn't, can you hear me now?
No. Is it on? It sounds like it's on. If you could just speak directly into it, thank you.
Good evening. My name is or Third Street. When coming to the council, I would like to request a, uh, that's a non-conform review into the codes and compliance of a coffee roaster located in nineteen thirty-one Susquehanna Street, which is owned by Little Amp's Coffee Roasters. When W C I, Little Amp's, was seeking permission to change the zone of the property, they claimed that no smoker degree would be coming out in the process, roasting coffee beans. A roasting, uh, roasting test was done to show, to show this. However, test was only done for a few minutes. After researching the process of roasting coffee beans, several governmental and coffee roasting-related websites indicated compounds and organic acids and natural gases, uh, combustion products or primary roasting of coffee beans. My wife and I have lived behind the property since two thousand and three, well before the roasting began in two thousand and twelve. I can verify that smoke is coming out of there video. Top of the stack on back of the building, smoke prevents us from being able to open up our windows. Fresh air can breathe lots, uh, throughout the air, which prevents us being able to sit in the backyard and enjoy our backyard. When the roast, when the roasting first begun, it was two to three days per week, or a few hours each time. Since then, the amount of time spent on roasting beans have been expanded to nearly, uh, a few hours per day, in which they sell the product within Giant Foods here in Central Pennsylvania. In addition, we recently learned that they, uh, a new water line is being installed in the building, or sink and bathroom. Previously, the building never had running water, uh, only a sewer drain that attached to our sewer line. When required whether this line was hooked into our sewer line or a new one, one was going to be installed, we were told that no permits for sewer work, or our life for the city or capital regions firm that the new, new water line will not empty again by sewer line, as party lines are not no longer permitted, uh, in the city for, uh, codes, um. No party lines for eight dash one oh five dash nineteen, Section B, uh, party line sewers. And it's just, prior to the passage of this chapter, may not be, may be repaired or replaced. If the property or properties contain such line have been abandoned or not in use for the period two years, a city main sewer is located adjacent to the property or properties, and reuse of the said property will require their installation of a new private sewer line in the city name. Uh, I know that they're in the process of getting water connection and the toilet facility with other code, code things. So these are the things that I feel that should be reviewed after they've been.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying after, I know that several of us have been on an email thread included with Capital Region Water, so if you wouldn't mind just staying for a few minutes a weekend, um, discuss further, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay?
No. Do you mind switching to this microphone? I'm not sure. Yes, you'll have to turn it on and again, speak directly into it. I think we're still having some audio issues. It's on? Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, it's on. Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, Joseph Robinson, Jr., twenty oh nine Bradley Drive, representing the Martin Luther King Leadership Development Institute here in Harrisburg. And I was here with you before, and I'm just here again to say again that the institute is, uh, very much interested in this American Rescue Plan funding, and I know we're gonna hear a report tonight. Uh, I certainly participated and attended the sessions that, uh, Chair Person Green conducted. And, uh, and so I'm here tonight to hear the outcome, but again, I just wanted to reiterate that we believe that those funds, and I know they're scarce, and I know, uh, they're also unprecedented. They're also, that's a one-time thing, but we believe that these funds, if placed in the hands of the nonprofits, and there are many in our community who are serving our community, and several of them were even present at the, uh, listening sessions that were held. And they, uh, I think that they've proven themselves capable of delivering services. And so as you deliberate and think about how best to utilize these, uh, unprecedented funds, uh, I really hope you will consider, uh, employing those nonprofits to allow them to be recipients of those funds, so that they can do the work that they've been doing. Uh, as I like to say, they've been making bricks without straw. Uh, as I like to say, they've been making bricks without straw. And now this is an opportunity for you to give them the assists that they, they need to be even more sustainable and even more. Effective, so that's certainly why I'm here tonight to hear of what you learned on the tour. And then as you move forward and think about your actual strategy and approach that you include. Uh, all of our many nonprofits that are serving our black and brown communities here in the City of Harrisburg. You consider them as recipients of those funds that they can do the work. That they've already proven themselves capable of performing, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes. First, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. The next approval needed is for the approval of minutes for the special legislative session. That occurred on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Green on the American Rescue Plan Town Halls. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, as I give the report tonight on the American Rescue Plan Town Halls, I'll try to keep things brief. Um, there will be notes available on the city council website that go into further detail of the discussion. During the month of April, the Budget and Finance Committee, along with members of city council, held three town hall meetings. Throughout the city to hear from residents regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding proposal presented to city council from the administration. These meetings were held here in council chambers on April twelfth. At Camp Curtain YMCA on April thirteenth, and at Mount Olive Baptist Church on April fifteenth. In total, we had about fifty-three residents come out to participate in the town hall meetings, as well as several organizations to serve city residents. Some of the things that we heard include, but are, are not limited to. Uh, affordable housing, concerns about increasing uh, rental amounts. Um, wanting to increase home ownership in the city, concerns to ensure that we don't create pockets of poverty by having. Isolated low income housing areas, uh, wanting to have more community projects and preservation such as community gardens. Uh, suggestions for public safety strategies. Neighborhood improvements, including investing in nonprofits and small black and brown businesses. And uh, reducing impacts such as illegal dumping um, and some urban removal projects. As well as repairing and replacing sewer lines and pipes, some community programs and educations. Uh, wanting to see the creation of a recreation center for children. Thing, uh, training and uh, workforce development facilities created here in the city. Programs such as indoor or outdoor pools to ensure that children in the city learn how to swim and learn how to become lifeguards. Uh, collaborating with other entities. Ensuring that uh, we encourage ADA compliance um, through our businesses as well as throughout housing in the city. Uh, community involvement and partnerships, uh, looking for gun, for, excuse me, violence intervention, drug, um, drug. Excuse me, drug prob- problem intervention, uh, partnering with community groups for job skills and after-school programs, increasing job trainings. Um, repairing side blocks and trees, expanding the program such as the senior tree program. Ensuring that we have accountability and transparency as we allocate the funds, uh, and ensuring that. Organizations and individuals that were severely impacted by COVID such as seniors, uh, do get a, a, a portion of funding. Um, overarching, we heard a theme of the need for collaboration with organizations and other stakeholders. Uh, detailed notes for this, these meetings will be available on the city council webpage, as well as recordings being available on the city's YouTube page. During our next work session on June sixth, we will be discussing Bill Five, which is the. ARPA funding proposal legislation, at this time we'll have a more robust discussion. Uh, as we look forward to moving forward with allocating these funds. This concludes my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Daniels on the work session of May second, two thousand and twenty-three. Chair Daniels?
Thank you, um, the commu- the Community and Economic Development Committee met. On, on May second, and we uh, reviewed two items, that the first one is resolution thirty-five hyphen twenty twenty-three. Which is an application submitted by Adam Kerr for property located at twenty-seven oh nine North Front Street. Um, they are demolishing two lots and two buildings and merging them into one. And um, they will be converted into a twenty-one unit um, building. All of the units will be market rate, um, and it was robust conversation about their affordability. The second resolution is thirty-six hyphen twenty twenty-three. It's the, uh, it's the building located at two oh two State Street, um, the applicants were WCI. And they were converting a four-unit commercial property into a four-unit residential property. Um, so both of the applicants met their um, their legal requirements. Uh, so I would recommend that we approve all of these bills. But I also think that we had a robust uh, discussion about affordability which we've been having. And I would like the Law Bureau to uh, bring down a preliminary draft on a, an affordable housing bill that has mandates rather than um, than voluntary. And that's it for my. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. The final report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Rodriguez on the work session of May second, two thousand and twenty-three. Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. On May second of two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Safety Committee met to discuss our quarterly reports. Uh, for the Bureau of Police, Commissioner Tom Carter and Lieutenant Kenneth Young of the Services Department joined us. Beginning with the GVI grant, there's currently strategies and actions being taken to begin the program by late twenty-three, early twenty twenty-four. The department is currently looking for a project manager to fulfill the requirements of the grant. Gun violence investigation is lined to be nearly one point two million dollars to the city. This will include efforts such as shot spotter gunshot detection, light replacements, and ring doorbell surveillance for participating homes. The local law enforcement support grant is marked to be nearly two point two million dollars that will provide additional license plate readers. Additional mental health services and body cam replacements for the officers that desperately need it. Our vice handled fifty-eight cases that removed two hundred and thirty-three grams of crack cocaine, three hundred and forty-one grams of cocaine. Twenty-eight ounces of marijuana, a thousand doses of heroin, removed nine firearms, equaling thirty-six arrests, and executed sixteen search warrants. For the Bureau of Fire, Chief Aneline mentioned his excitement for cloud-based training to get the firefighters up to speed on the new technologies. Uh, the paper-based scheduling system has been the system um, that the, excuse me, that the fire department has used for quite some time. Um, Chief mentioned the department's activity at the farm show has been consistent. Uh, this work is important where there are overcrowded events such as the farm show and the gun show, et cetera. The Bureau has been over budgeted, only two items, one being medical for retirees. And besides that, the Bureau of Fire is in a good fiscal position. Chief also spoke about the latest series of hiring efforts in which posters and signs have been spread across the city. And attempts to attract new blood to the Bureau of Fire. New firefighters will assist in being instrumental in overlapping incidents and ensure we can service multiple incidents simultaneously. For the Bureau of Code, Director Anne Montgomery gave an overhaul on the current status of demo and citations issued for non-compliance throughout the city. Um, Director Montgomery mentioned the needs cannot be completely met due to the need of additional revenue. Uh, Governor Square was a topic of discussion in which the Bureau of Code stated that they are doing all they can for the residents in the area of that city. Um, of the city. Director Nelva Wright for the Bureau of Health, permitted to give an overview of the works of the Health Department for the City of Harrisburg. We learned that after a health procedure, uh, Mr. Russo is back and able to assist in the department's inspections. Great, 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 great news for Mr. Russo. And Director Wright was asked about the potential for a full, a fully and thorough health department in the city. Um, Director Wright established it would be beneficial to the residents, but at the current point, it may be a bit too expensive uh, to accomplish currently. Director Wright also discussed some current stores and businesses she's currently working with to bring up to compliance. Such as the fifteenth and her corner store that we had spoke about on that night. Director Wright was asked, uh, what would be considered a good standard closing time for convenience stores and or corner stores in the city? Since the ordinance is pretty vague in that aspect, and she acknowledged about nine to ten P M. The latest should be the latest our corner stores or convenience stores should remain open. I appreciate the hard work from all of the above departments of the public safety. And that concludes the work of the Public Safety Committee for the report from May second of two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Chair Rodriguez. We have one ordinance for first reading, that's Bill Six of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Six, two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating the remaining home investment partnerships program funds. For United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
I noted earlier budget and finance, but I believe this should go to building and housing, that's home funding. Excuse me for that error. We do not have any ordinances for amendment, and we do not have any ordinances for final passage. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application. To the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. For the development of a cost benefit analysis of the Paxton Creek de-channelization project. And authorizing the City of Harrisburg to designate Marita J. Kelly. As the designee for the execution of the grant agreement and related documents.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three?
As President Bowers, just one comment, due to my uh, employment with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, I will be recusing myself from. Uh, voting on this resolution.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-five, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan. For twenty-seven oh nine and twenty-seven seventeen North Front Street, submitted by Adam Kerr. With E I two seven oh nine North Front Street, comma LLC, comma to demolish the existing office buildings. On the subject properties, combine the lots into a single parcel, and construct a twenty-one unit multifamily dwelling.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-three?
I have a question, if I may?
Yes.
I, I was not here, but I did watch the vigorous discussion on this particular property. And I just wanted to know, because I, I didn't hear it in the discussion. Uh, this property is one of the zones that gets no benefit from our ordinance. We only changed the zoning ordinance, I think, to three zones where affordable housing, a benefit applied. So they could not get any of the credits that were discussed. Um, which is when Ms. Daniels is asking for a mandate one, it's just a factor of, of. What you can, what they can and can't do, so literally they, they cannot get any of the benefits in the ordinances because of where the property is located.
But yet, there will be twenty-one units that our residents can afford to live in.
I, we, it's, it's a robust discussion that's going on quite a while. I, I just point out that because of that, there is no, uh.
Uh, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Robert, there, there is no expectation that this unit will, will fall under. Will, will either, either opt to participate or, or create affordable, affordable housing units. So my recommendation was based off of that conversation, but also previous conversations. We seem to be interested in a mandate rather than an optional, so they're disconnected, sorry. Sorry, I think in my presentation, maybe I made it seem more directly connected than, than they were.
I'm just making the point, because I didn't think it was in the discussion, that, that, you know, if council wants to expand where it goes. Then we would do, need an additional amendment to expand where it goes. But we don't, but right now, we do not have it in this particular district.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying. Council members, are there any question, further questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Thirty-five? I, I still have one comment, uh, the applicant, Mr. Kerr, clearly noted. Uh, during the work session held on May second, that he and his company, E I twenty-seven oh nine North Front Street. LLC were not interested in participating in the city's affordable housing program. While it is voluntary, it's not mandatory, uh, the city needed something in writing to assist with affordability. Um, in this instance, four units would have been deemed affordable for our residents. However, with the unknown rent range, uh, our residents would be cost burdened by this property. As a result, I will be voting no on this resolution. There are no other comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to echo the sentiments that you just provided, uh. Just for the lack of willingness to want to participate in the MBE, WBE, or even really be interested in our residents, I, I too will be voting no on this.
Okay. All right, seeing and hearing no further commentary or questions, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Resolution Thirty-five, two thousand and twenty-three fails by a vote of four to two. Or, sorry, five to two.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-six of two thousand, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Hi, Ron, if you wouldn't mind using this microphone, we're having some difficulties.
You do have to suspend the rules.
Yes, well, I was just acknowledging so he could get to a microphone that we could hear him. Um, at this time, please hold on. At this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion of Resolution Thirty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Ronald Lucas, I'm an attorney with Stevens and Lee, Cross Street in Harris. Um, with me is Christine. AJ, we're Black and Associates. We are here tonight for the representing the project, but there was no questions to us, so we weren't. We didn't know that there was any presentation needed, or any questions we need to answer. We understood, my colleague was at the work session, it was a discussion at the work session. And. The way the ordinance is written, as your solicitor said, I've been in communities where they have benefits, incentives, they've done that. I've also represented developers that had a very hard time finding people who wanted to live. Based on the guidelines that most ordinances have to have to say an income level. They were not able to feed in that. What we find is the market is just very difficult, because you have to have a certain. The developer has to have a certain income level from those units in order to build it. What our client wants to do is build, yes, more, it's more expensive housing. But along the river, it's attractive situation. And it would have people coming into the city, maybe within the city residents or maybe outside, to move there to rent those units. And um, you'd have new residents perhaps, and perhaps if they can afford it, most likely they're gonna have a higher income. That's, that's one thing. It not only would benefit the city in that respect, it's not gonna make it so that some people. Who can't afford it would have housing there, that's okay. But the developer has to be able to make the project work, that's the thing there. Um, and sometimes we found that those situations, um, one community, State College Borough. They're going to, it's mandatory, it's incentives there, you get incentives for doing it, very rich incentives. Increase units, increase floors, things like that. Our client thought it was, they're pro- Our client thought it was appropriate height, and appropriate number of units, so we provide adequate parking on those two properties. And it's very much an improvement uh to that situ, that location of two older buildings that need to be demolished, and the fact that Jeffrey Knight said it is an enhancement to that neighborhood. Clients met with the neighbors and everybody, nobody was against it. Everybody was supportive of it, especially the neighbors right across River Alley. Um, so we, I didn't think we needed to make a presentation because it was fully discussed. And as um Chair Daniels indicated, yes, it would be nice to do, but your ordinance doesn't mandate it, and it doesn't provide incentives. So you can't just give us incentives because the zoning doesn't provide for it. That wouldn't be fair to everybody else. Somebody got incentives for things. But, and what State College Borough is doing is they have a provision for it. Most of them are doing this. You have a contribution upfront calculated based on the number of units you would have to provide for, you would could provide. You don't get those extra floor or extra units, but you provide it upfront. That gives the municipality money to create affordable housing themselves in a location market where you can have something. And I know that's what State College Borough is doing. They're creating great units that can be affordable housing using that money, the seed money, to get started on it. They have done that. So what I'm asking is, I know you voted. Um, but your solicitor can agree with me hopefully, that if you pass a motion to reconsider your vote and do that, yes, the person who made the motion in the second could be doing that, think directly on Robert's Rules of Order. I think.
We're, we're not under Robert Rules of Order, but but the council knows how to do a motion for consideration.
Okay, we do. We're well aware, and thank you. Thank you very much for your commentary. We will, we do have a research analyst on staff, and we can certainly look into what State College Borough is doing and perhaps amend uh further amend our ordinance that we've had. So the, and I won't really go back and forth, but I just wanted to clarify, we have amended our ordinance um to include HUD's small area zip code because we were finding that developers were still coming from outside of our our area um utilizing Dauphin County's median family income, which is three to four times larger than city proper median family income. So it's, it's, it's a serious concern of ours, obviously. We are concerned about um affordability of safe housing for our residents. So um you mentioned attracting new, new residents, that's fine. But we really would like to retain uh the residents that we have and make sure that um their housing accommodations are safe and affordable. So I'll, I'll stop there. And we do have to resume with our meeting. Um, so thank you very much uh for your time. I'd, I'm not sure if anyone would like to offer a motion to reconsider. Yes.
Just a question again. So I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, and you do have affordable housing development standards. And what, what zones are, do those affordable housing standards apply to?
They're outlined with the ordinance, but I'm not really, the R M district, that's the residential.
Do they apply to the R F district?
They do not.
We've already noted that they do not.
And that is the district that our property is noted in.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So can you explain?
Well, I'm, again, I I'm not really interested in going back and forth. I will resume our meeting and and return to our legislative session. I will entertain a motion should any of our council members be interested in a motion to reconsider, and then we will resume with our meeting. But thank you again for the information regarding State College Borough. We will ask our research analysts to assist in uh conducting some research to learn more about what they're doing, and perhaps we can amend our ordinance further. So thank you again for being here this evening, and at this time, I will entertain a motion to return to our legislative session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council members, are are any of you interested in offering a motion to reconsider? Okay, seeing and hearing none.
I would, because there is no way this decision does not bypass, does not I don't even want to make the legal argument.
We recess for a moment.
Yeah.
You could recess and go on the executive side and be one of the legal advice.
Yeah.
Okay, the time is six fifty P M. We will recess our legislative session to enter into an executive session, and we will return momentarily. Thank you. We will recess our legislative session to enter into an executive session, and we will return momentarily, thank you. It's six fifty-five P.M. I would like to return to our legislative session. As we noted, we just participated in an executive session for five minutes. Okay, so, we're now moving to Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for two oh-two State Street, submitted by W.C.I. Partners to convert an existing office building into a four-unit multifamily dwelling.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mister Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Lawson?
Yes.
Mister Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mister Jason Graves to serve on the Board of the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three?
Um, yes, Madam President, I just wanted to ask Solicitor Grover, is there any known conflicts that you may be aware of with Mister Graves, uh, be appointed?
No, so I, I myself was the first appointee to this board, and authorities are allowed to have us city employees on it. And he already does from business development, have a knowledge base related to transportation, so it seems like a good fit.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any additional questions related to Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mister Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Lawson?
Yes.
Mister Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution appointing Miss Joan Gray to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg.
It's Miss Joanne Gray. But thank you. Uh, council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution forty of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mister Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Lawson?
Yes.
Mister Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution forty, two thousand and twenty-three passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, Resolution forty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the second proposed twenty-twenty-three operations-related budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations and authorize the roll forward of certain twenty-twenty-two budget year commitments.
Thank you. Resolution forty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to convey the real property located at six-four-seven and six-four-nine Harris Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to the United States General Services Administration in furtherance of the Harrisburg Federal Courthouse Project in exchange for perpetual easement rights to a portion of property necessary for the City of Harrisburg's roundabout at Seventh and Riley Streets, and nominal consideration.
Thank you. Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution appointing Miss Sherri Tolomeo, Tolomeo, to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution forty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution ratifying a Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for transportation alternatives set aside application and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any forms and documents related to the award of nine hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of funding the Capital Area Green Belt Pax Tang Parkway Trail Restoration Project.
Thank you. Resolution forty-five of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution forty-six of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Thank you. A Resolution forty-six of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, we have Resolution forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan for J.M.B. Gardens located on twenty-eight parcels on four proposed sites along the twenty-two-hundred and twenty-three-hundred blocks of North Sixth Street, filed by LaShawn McCoy with J.M.B. L.L.C. to develop vacant lots as forty-one dwelling units, a community center, and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution of the City Council of, City of Harrisburg reestablishing Hot Spot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Resolution forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Safety Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion?
Um, yes, Madam President. Not so much as old business, just wanted to wish a belated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. My mom, May twenty-third of twenty-three, unfortunately passed away. So today marks her twenty-year passing anniversary, if you will. So just appreciative of all the moms out there, just wanted to send, we love you from council.
Thank you very much. Any other old business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Um, yes, just a reminder to folks that City Council will be, along with several other organizations for immigrant heritage, men will be having a citizenship session. And if folks are interested, they should register with Mister Truesdale.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Just have one note for scheduling, so Harrisburg City Council will host a work session followed by a special legislative session next Tuesday, May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five-thirty P.M. To take action on Resolution forty-two, discuss and take action on Resolution forty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Any other new business, any other discussion?
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
So we're only going to do with the work session, the one bill?
Correct, that's it, yes. That way, we can discuss it before taking a vote.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, thank you for asking. Oh, would you like to share about Arts Fest before we adjourn?
Yes, sorry.
Hey.
Oh, but yes, the Art Fest is this weekend down on Front Street, and I think it's also going to City Hall. So that would be nice to get out and come, so I was so enthused with my birthday this weekend, I did forget about something special we've been saying, you. So I'm sorry, that was on my brain.
That's why they're having Arts Fest this year.
Yeah, you know what, that's right, and I'm able to cancel school for everybody on Monday, so no, school is not in session for anybody on Monday, and the Arts Fest is this weekend, so I planned a great weekend for everybody, so have fun.
Thank you for that, we appreciate you.
You're welcome.
And happy early birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, the time is seven oh-five P.M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.